The City Council Committee on Government Services will meet in City Council Chambers on Wednesday, August 10th, 2022 at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing. Sorry, thank you. City Council Committee on Government Services will meet in City Council Chambers on Wednesday, August 10th, 2022 at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing creating a calendar to schedule flag raising events and a liaison to the cultural council. Subcommittee meetings are held to take action on the, for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. Individuals may participate in person or remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Please click the link below to join the webinar. Password 850995. Telephone webinar ID 87224346865. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we'll post the, on the City of Salem's website, an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and/or services for effective communication such as sign language interpreter, assistive listening device, or print materials in digital format, or reasonable modification in program services, policies, or activities may contact the City of Salem's ADA Coordinator as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. Agenda: Creating a schedule to, for flag raising events and liaison for cultural council. Present, we have all members of the committee plus Counselor Morcillo. And we also have with us Kim Emmerling from the Veterans. I think what we'll probably cover first is, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at the note sent by the city solicitor where she talked about the Cultural Council liaison. Does anyone have a chance to see that? So I'll just read that very quickly for anyone at home who might be listening. "The legal department has been asked as to whether a member of the City Council could appoint as a liaison to the Salem Cultural Council. The Salem City Council, the Salem Cultural Council is a public body created in Section 58 of Chapter 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws which provides in relevant part as follows. Any city or town may establish a local cultural council and any consortium of cities and towns from the, with the approval of the council may establish a regional cultural council. Local cultural councils shall consist of at least five and not more than 22 members to be appointed by the mayor of a city. Members of the local and regional council chamber shall be appointed for staggered terms of three years and any member shall not be appointed to more than two consecutive terms. Members shall have demonstrated scholarship or creativity or distinguished service to the arts humanities interpretive sciences upon a vacancy. For any reason, the member's successor, if any, shall be appointed for a term of three years and shall serve under the qualification of such member's successor. Members shall not be elected public officials. Members shall be considered to be special municipal employees for the purpose of Chapter 268A pursuant to the statute. Salem's Cultural Council is a public as opposed to a private body and is eligible for council liaison as outlined in Section 31 of Appendix A of City Council Ordinance governing, governing the rules and orders of the City Council. Section 31 allows for liaisons with the limitations for boards or agencies as in the determination of the president as required provided however that no council member shall be required to sit as a member of a liaison, no more than one such board or agency." So I think what we have there obviously is we have, we are able to appoint a liaison to the cultural council. The, I guess the question would be, you know, I think everybody on this council is, for the most part, is serving as a liaison to one or two, in some cases, three boards. So I think the, the question is, I think we clearly can appoint a liaison. I think the cultural council is worthy of having a liaison in my, in my personal opinion. But the question is, do we have the bandwidth and are we able to do that? So I think that we can, as a, as a board, we could recommend that it's at the president's discretion to appoint that liaison if someone's willing to do it. But I guess I'll leave it up to discussion, see what you all think. Counselor Will.
Thank you Chair Hapworth. You know, being a freshman counselor and being a part of a couple, being a liaison to a couple of boards and commissions, some are more proactive than others with city counselors. And I do believe that it would be in our bandwidth to take on the Salem Cultural Council. As a body, they're very proactive in trying to communicate with the city as far as, you know, how to advocate for artists. So I do believe that this appointment would be validated or warranted. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you Chair Hapworth. Also new to the council, I've learned some of the rules of the council and, you know, understanding that when we have council committee meetings that, or council, full council meetings that coincide with board meetings that we liaison with, that it's incumbent on us to be at the council meetings. We're not always able to be at all the meetings that we liaison with. So I think it's kind of incumbent on us to find out if there's someone on the council that would be willing to serve as the liaison because, you know, there are still even a lot of boards that don't have liaisons that could have liaisons.
If there's no more discussion, does anyone have a motion? Counselor Will.
Thank you Chair Hapworth. I would like to make a motion that we adopt having a liaison for the Salem Cultural Council. If that is the motion.
Is it the motion?
So if, as a, just a minor friendly amendment, if you just, this is, this is fine. Adopting, that we recommend the adoption of a liaison at the president's discretion or the, at the, at the president's choosing.
So moved.
Of a willing liaison at the president's choosing. Is there a second? Second by Counselor McLean? Since we're all in person, all in favor? All opposed? I'm sorry, I was in favor. So I count five, including myself, in favor of adopting a willing liaison at the president's choosing. So the next item is the flag raisings. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at what initially Dominic Pengalo had sent out regarding the city's policy for flag raisings? If not, I can sort of summarize it here.
Do you want to?
So I guess the background, the background on this is, this is, I think, 20, was it 2020 or 2019? I think with, 2020, I believe, when this came out, came from Counselor Mador. And this was at a time when the council was approving, and we still continue to approve a number of different flag raisings for different holidays and different groups. And I think there could be potentially contentious debates on which flags went at which times and for how long. And the goal at the time was to create a more organized way of doing that. Since then, the city has, September of 2022, the city adopted a, a policy around flag raisings, just to clarify, you know, what, what we put where, who has authority over them. So the, I guess the gist of it is that this applies to all city-owned properties and flagpoles. The United States of America flag is displayed in accordance with, with law and is displayed higher than other flags of other nations. And that the authority to, to raise a flag starts with the president, goes to the governor, then the, the mayor, and then to the city council. And then any conflicts around flag raisings would be resolved as to who issued the order and what, in what, in what precedence. And that the flags, I guess a movement or a group could be displayed, but they could, we could not display flags that were promoting a commercial interest, flags of a particularly religious movement, or flags of a political party. And that, like I said, or any flags of other municipalities or nations are displayed below the flag of the United States. Kim, did I get, did I get that right as far as you understand it? I don't know how, what, what sort of a...
Yeah, that's exactly it.
So I think, actually, I don't know if Julio Moda is here. Let me check here. He was planning on joining remotely. We have a raised hand on City of Salem, too. Counsel, Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thanks Chair Hapworth. Quick question. The communication you talk about with regards to the flag raising guidelines, who did that come from and when? I don't have anything from the chief of staff in my inbox.
So it came from Dominic to, I guess it was to me, and then I sent it in the, in the link that included the, the notes about the meeting.
For tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was sent, I think, Monday. And I think, let me promote.
Counsel Watsonfeld. People on Salem.com, on the mayor's page, there's a flag. Can you text me?
I promoted, that is Julio. Okay. That makes me concerned that we don't have anyone taking notes because I thought that was, oh shoot. Gotcha, okay. So we have Julio joining us from the mayor's office.
Hello.
Julio, can you, can you, can you attempt to speak so we can understand if you're able to be heard?
Let me see if you guys can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Awesome.
So Julio, did, were you able to hear what I sort of described around the policy? And did that make sense to you?
Yes, yeah. I've been here since the beginning and I have the flag policy in front of me right now.
Okay. Did anyone have, is there anything you wanted to add before I opened it up to the, the committee for questions?
Nope, nope. I'd like to open it up.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you Chair Hapworth. So I have a couple of questions and I don't know if this is for Julio or Kim or Trish or whoever. I thought, so I think it's really important that there's a procedure. For example, if someone wanted to initiate a, a flag raising on behalf of an organization or whatever, is there an application process? So that's one question. The other is, at one point I thought that flags could only be raised and lowered by someone from the veterans department, which I think has changed recently, at least the practical application of that. So my concern is, is there a procedure that if someone wants to get a flag raised that isn't already done? How would they go about, you know, doing that? And what is the protocol for a flag being raised?
Thank you. Actually, I'll take the second portion of that question first and turn it over to our veterans agent. Kim, are we, is there any, is there any policy or procedure around who is able to do the, the flag raisings?
The direct answer is no, that I, I'm aware of. And to your question, Counselman, so it depends on which flag we're referring to, right? The president, the governor, and that's it. For the US flag, to order him to half-staff. That's it. The fire department, just because they lose a fireman doesn't mean they can put this US flag at half-staff because he's the first responder, right? It's got to govern, the president, governor. That's the protocol for all flags outside of a federal building, right? Because that's all the authority to do. For here, there really is, I don't know that there's a formalized application process to raise and lower flags at Riley Plaza, which are the only ones I'm really sort of involved with. And so there should be, that'd be my recommendation as well. And it would avoid a lot of, a lot of confusion, especially recently, about what's going up and what's not and who's doing them. And that would be helpful, I think, so.
I just have a follow-up since Kim's at the podium. Yeah, it concerns me because I know sometimes when the American flag is raised, or the US flag, that it has to be treated in a certain way. So, you know what I mean? Can't just be thrown on the side of the place. And also, I know, I know Julio's done some of them and taken a lot of care. Like, I know the council will assign a timetable for how long, you know, the flags are going to be up and then they, and then the flag goes back.
Well, correct. And that should be in the application process. Here's what we want to do, here's how long we'd like to keep it up. And it's pretty straightforward. But it should really, I know, as you pointed out, the mayor can do the flags, you know, per her order. And then the rest of it should really come out of the council if it's, if it's going to be an event. So people are aware of it, other people in the, you know, the community are aware of it and all that, so. And the people are responsible to put them up and down, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Before I move on, just Julio, did you have anything to add around the application process? Is there something that you're aware of on your end if, if somebody wants to raise a flag? Or is it sort of, we do our best as they make their requests? I know a lot of times requests come in a little bit late.
Yeah, we don't have an application process. On, okay, I would say it really depends on the event. So, or, some events, the organizers are working with the mayor's office. First of all, they contact us in the first place, well ahead of time, and are very responsive. Sometimes organizers aren't as responsive and don't come to us very early. So there, I think you're right in that it can be difficult. Sometimes people come to us with events and, in good faith, they're fine events to, to flag or, flag raising or something everyone agrees with, no one has any issues with. They just come, they come to us with it late, essentially. So I think, we actually, it wouldn't hurt at all to have some sort of process just so it's out there. So it's not just in the mayor's office. I wouldn't be opposed to kind of a simple application process. I, I do have some concerns that, I don't know how often this subcommittee meets, but I certainly don't want someone to come to the office, the mayor's office, and they have an event they want to do, but it just doesn't line up with, you know, whenever this committee meets. It has to get approved, there's not enough time. For example, upcoming flag raising for Ukraine's independence. I think the idea was initially spurred by just a regular, her name, but she just approached the office. I don't know when, but it was recent. So, so yeah, currently there's no formal process. Things just get handled internally.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's, that's something that we've, you know, informally, I think a lot of people have talked about is there, would there be a way to, to create? And I think it would make it easier on a lot of people because there's confusion, I think even, you know, on, on my end, I think, up to a few weeks ago, I didn't, didn't realize that there was even a, a city process to do this. It seemed like a lot of things came through the council and things, we sort of got these put on our calendars and we came to flag raisings. There seems to be a lot more that are coming out lately and it would be great, I think, to have some sort of a formal process. And would that be, Julio, would that be you that would be responsible for that? Or I'm just, just so we all understand sort of where those responsibilities fall?
Yeah, absolutely. I basically, I want to say de facto in charge of all of them.
I think you're cutting out a little bit. Can you try to speak again Julio?
Hear me?
Yep, I hear you now.
All right.
Perfect.
Good?
Yeah, good.
Okay. So, so yeah, I'd be happy to be the person in charge of that process. I will say that we can ask things of organizers, but, you know, sometimes organizers come to us with an idea that's not really fully fleshed out, right? They don't have a poster, they don't have a flyer, or they, they just don't have details about anything, about who they want to speak. So I don't know if we want to account for that, some sort of process, just if we want to have just basically an initiary, like, how would I explain it? Something to approve an event before the details are out. Because there's often a gap between someone coming to us, they have an event, everyone's on board with it, and we just want to get the time down and actually having any details about what the event will look like, who's speaking. So, yeah, just wanted to put that out there, that any process might want to take that into account.
Before I move on, Counsel Watsonfeld has a question. Before I move on to that, just real quickly, does the, does the mayor formally approve those requests that come in? Or do they come in and sort of, you just deal with them as best you can?
We just deal with them as best we can, yeah.
Okay. Counsel Watsonfeld?
This is not a question. This is some suggestions so that we can keep this kind of moving along. I would absolutely recommend some kind of highly visible accessible online request form. I would absolutely request that that request form include all of the necessary details that we would require in order to build a small program around a flag raising. I think we should consider it treated similar to the way we treat block parties, which maybe means that in, you know, if the mayor's not available to approve, we can approve in lieu and happy to have, you know, Maureen handle our approval signatures electronically with a written consent. I think that it is incredibly necessary, Kim, that whomever is staffing these knows how to fold the American flag. I went to a recent flag raising and you were not present, so I leaned back on my maritime school training and folded her appropriately. But I may have been, I don't know if I was the only one present who knew, but because that generally takes place before the program begins, when the American flag is taken down, I do think it's important. I don't often assert that, such a strong opinion about patriotism, patriotic decision like that, but I do feel strongly about it. So I would also imagine that there need to be some sort of, I would, I would request there be some kind of events kit, right? Like, do you need a podium? Here's a basic agenda. There's three things on it. A staff person has to be there with a ladder, because we didn't have a ladder at the last one, right? So there, I think there needs to be some sort of standardization around how this is handled, for sure. But I agree that I, I think we should recommend a calendar. I think we should recommend a highly visible online form. I think we should recommend an events kit. We should recommend any staff present knows how to fold the American flag. I would also recommend that, or not recommend, but this, I guess, is a question. I noticed in the flag policy that's listed online that there are a number of events that are considered, scheduled permanently. And I'm curious as to how one gets on that fancy list. Is that by order of some kind? How does that, how does that get done? Because there are some outliers that I'm surprised are missing, and there are some things on here I was curious to see. So I would be, I'd be curious for more information on that point particularly, if anyone's able to speak to it. Thanks.
Julio, are you, or actually you are, Kim, are you able to speak to the, the calendar that's at the bottom there? When it's updated, where that specifically came from?
I personally don't know. And I'd love to see it because I'm not sure what's permanently on there either, so.
I can, I can read it off just for, for knowledge here.
These are local city ones for Riley Plaza.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's February 27th to make an Independence Day, March 17th, Irish American Heritage, June 1st to the 13th, 15th to the 18th, and 20th to the 30th, LGBTQ Pride, June 14th, US Army Day, June 19th, Juneteenth, June, I'm sorry, August 4th, US Coast Guard Day, August 31st, Overdose Awareness Day, September 15th, October 12th, October 14th to the 15th, Hispanic Heritage, October 13th, US Navy Day, October 16th to the 31st, Italian Heritage, Italian American Heritage, and November 10th, US Marines Day.
Well, that sounds like a list I would concur with, but I've never seen it and I don't know who put it together, so I would assume Julio did if the council didn't. So the only thing I'd recommend on that is, is a, a limit to how long they're going to be up there, right? Because you mentioned June, the Army birthday is right in the middle of that, and, and no one in the city, I don't think, has time to go up and down four times in one month to do flags. It's just, it should be, you know, cut it down a week, no more than a week for everything. It seems reasonable. No more than a week. But that's only a recommendation, only because I'm the guy that's sort of involved with Riley Plaza. And that's only because it's, you know, dedicated to a Medal of Honor recipient. And the last veteran service officer, I'm not sure what exactly happened, but he took charge of that and everyone knows not to go near it. So I inherited it. It's not a problem. I'm, I'm more than willing to get involved and be part of the, the ceremony and take care of the flags appropriately. Not going to go folding them every time they go up and down, because again, three times in one month, 12 flags? I mean, unless you're going to give me an army of people to help, so. But as long as it's treated respectfully, you know, all the flags that are going up and down are. And that's what I try and do when I'm doing them. And to your point about having a staff member, there really, it's only once or twice that I know of, I wasn't involved, but somebody got a little ladder, and it doesn't take a rock scientist to figure out and do it. But the minute somebody falls off that, we, we're going to own them. So that cannot have anybody else doing except a city employee, of course, so. But a real structure, a little more structure would be very helpful.
Counsel Morcillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not being a member of the committee, so I have a bunch of suggestions. And I also have a question. I'm not sure if we're responsible for this. We can make suggestions and that should, the suggestions should be coming out of the committee. I will note that I do remember seeing this list at some point, but we still get, we still get requests in the city council for the same things that are listed on here. And I think that was kind of what spurred this whole discussion, is, it's just a, it's, it's...
It's already there, why are we talking about it?
Yeah. And we can, we can surmise why it's happening, but I would also like to see a default amount, which is a day. You put up your flag for a day. If it's a month that commemorates something, then maybe there's some leeway, right? But I, I think the city does need to put up some sort of standards on how long a flag by default stays up. And then, you know, knowing that of course people aren't going to come during the weekend to take it down and put up the American flag. So that sort of stuff needs to be worked out. I would like to see this list in a public space on the website. And as flags are being added during the year, just update it. We may not carry over all the dates to the next year, but at least people can look and see what flags are being raised. Is the Greek flag being raised? Is the Polish flag being raised? Should I go in and ask somebody to do that, right? With an application to do it. And then also, if there is an event, it should be on the Salem calendar so that people know to go to it. I mean, I, I don't know how the word gets out for these events. It's very small, and I think more people would show up if they knew that this particular heritage is being celebrated and honored, and no one knows about it. It's, so we need, I, I think that's kind of the process that I would suggest is just making this more transparent to the whole city. How you get a flag raised, if you want one raised, how you go about creating an event around it. Maybe not everyone wants or needs an event around it, they just want to see the flag flown. And, you know, what's, we need to set some defaults, so. Yeah.
Right. And I don't think, again, it's only a recommendation as a constituent here, but it doesn't have to be all that thick and detailed, right? They put a request in, they raise a flag, what's, which flag is it? And, right, two or three days, no ceremony, or if there is a ceremony, have some sort of structure about who's speaking, who you would like to speak, who you're going to have speaking. And really, for some of them, the only structure would be like, know who the guest speaker is and what they're going to be talking about. I mean, that'd be nice to know. So it's just on an open mic down in Riley Plaza for whatever, so.
And I'm not trying to take away any sort of power from the city council here. If people can still come and ask you to put in a request for a flag raising, we put in the one for the Asian-American and Pacific Islander ones and, you know, got all the flags and, it was a lot of last-minute stuff, but, I mean, we put that in and we voted on it. So that can still happen, it's just if it's already on the calendar, I don't know why we need to vote on it again. But I also want other people to be aware of how they can do it if they don't have a connection with a counselor that is going to bring in flag raisings and doesn't want to bother the mayor's office. Like, if there's just an easy way to do it, I think that's a good thing.
Right. Right.
And then, and then, to follow up, there has to be a policy to determine whether that's going to happen or not, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I would think generally they should come out of the council, and they should, so the council's fully aware of what's going on down there in Riley Plaza, and on a case-by-case basis, certainly come out of the mayor's office, she can do what she wants almost, so, with the flag, so. And, and again, she's got one right outside her window, she can-
Yeah.
Put anything on there, so.
Would it make sense to have it come to the council once a year, an updated calendar? Are you, so I guess from my perspective, I think I'm of the mind that ideally, we would have a, I think to Counsel Marcelo's point, we would just have an updated list, that people could see what's, what's flying and when it is, and if there were a, a situation where someone comes to their counselor and wants something, or they just want the support of the City Council, that we, we could do that. But that ideally, everything that we're raising would be, we would know about it, you know, a year in advance potentially. Would that, would that make sense to you, Kim, or is that, is that, would you prefer to see them just come through the council?
No, no, it makes perfect sense, but the, this, and of course, there's going to be leeway, right? The Polish constitution is on a certain day, but it, we don't always hold it that day, because, you know, it's Tuesday afternoon at 3:00 or something, so.
Right.
So there's got to be leeway, but yes, the more structured, the more we're aware what's going on. So if I can't be there, then I can make sure somebody else is, is down there, not falling off the ladder, so.
I'll note that Counsel Riccardi has joined us, and Trish O'Brien has also joined us. Counsel Riccardi, do you still, you had your hand up, did you still want to speak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry I was late. I did have a, a quick question, apologies if this was already, I'm sure it was already addressed. Are we, are we reviewing and discussing the posted flag policy that's posted on the website that lists those dates that you just noted that was just recently updated? Because it does have that kind of cadence of approval level, so like, the president approves, and then the governor, and then the mayor. Is that what we're looking at this evening as well? As well as the calendar, or are we just looking at the calendar piece?
Well, we're looking at both, so the, as you remember, the, the initial order came in from Counsel Mador, and I believe this, this policy was put into effect after her order, if I'm, if I'm correct there. But, yeah, the, the precedence of approval and the, the calendar.
Do we know, so that flag policy, that is obviously not a council policy, but that comes from the mayor's office, is that, that's correct, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm caught up now. Thanks.
Julio?
Thank you. So, a couple things. To answer the question you asked a few minutes ago, I don't know what the input was to deciding, you know, what flags would be raised. This policy was created before my time, but anyways, that being said, I agree with a lot that's been said, especially from Counsel Marcelo about putting stuff on the calendar, it's very easy to do. Updating this policy with basically the regular events, you know, basically putting those on the policy, and you said, Counsel Hapworth, if you want to create something yearly, the, the organizers who come to us, we can reasonably assume that they don't want to do their events just once, we can assume that. Often they'll want to do it year to year. So, at the end of the year, or at some point of time, we can just kind of look back and see what ones we've done already, which I have, I have the list of that, and add those to the policy. So, we can just have a working list on the policy of, of what flag raisings we can expect, so we don't have to do, if it goes through council, so you don't have to vote on, you know, every single one that we've done so far, that we can expect to see again. That's it.
Thank you, Julio. Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. So I, I think that what Kim and Counsel Marcelo and Watsonfeld said are really instructive, I do feel like, even though it's not a council, you know, initiative, you know, my recommendation would be that the city does have an application to Counsel Watsonfeld's and, and Kim's idea, because that would really cover all the stuff that Julio said, you know, when council's not able to meet, but also would give people who want the flag raised and have an event around it, some kind of structure to what the event will be. You know, rarely is there contention, but there is contention sometimes at the flag raising. Who's controlling the event? I see all the flag raisings at Riley Plaza as a city property, city event, so I do think that having an, an actual application with details and what's expected is important.
And Julio, how, how difficult would it be to create an application, an online application that folks could go through to, to request a flag raising?
Uh, I'm actually not sure. We would probably request that IT just create a page. I don't know, wonder what category it would be, if it would be mayor's office, request one, but I'm definitely, I'm definitely not opposed to it, you know, I don't want to just encourage someone from doing an event, doing a flag raising, just because maybe they don't have the courage to email, you know, Kim Driscoll. So, so yeah, I'm definitely not opposed to something like Marcelo said, something very visible that anyone could use. I don't think it would be difficult, though. I really don't imagine why it would be.
Makes sense. See, I think that, that, I mean, that, to me, that makes, that would make the most sense to have a, a way for someone to go online to see what the policies were, how they could apply for it, and then it could potentially be something that is submitted from the mayor's office to the City Council at the beginning of the year, that we just receive and file, and that we just have some oversight as to what's, what's happening and when it's happening. Any other questions or comments from the council? Trish, did you have any, anything you wanted to add from, to this, or?
Can you just clarify when you say once a year? So will every organization have like a window that they need to apply for once a year? And they need to stick to that window, or?
I think what I, I mean, and I'm certainly not in charge of this, but I think what, what I would imagine would be that it would be something that would come out, once a year we would see, just the annual stuff, so that, what we see on this list here for the most part is the stuff that happens every year, but if someone wants to add something throughout the year, they still, they still could. It may just be something that's, that's added the next year again, or it may be just be a one-time, you know, we may not do the Ukrainian Independence Flag every single year, but maybe we will, depends on what is important to future generations of Salemites.
Great.
And strictly, and she probably should read Riley Plaza, because that's, it's very specific only to Riley Plaza.
Right.
Like, the other ones go up and down by order of the governor or the president.
Right.
Those are all yours.
Yeah. Yeah, and then by events at the common, they, they have traditionally come to us, requested as part of their event requests, so I, I could put it on my application, I guess, for, say, the Salem Common, for an event like that.
Yeah, and I think anything like, I guess, from my perspective-
The Pride Parade, that's the Pride Month.
That should be in their application.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
Um, he was saying like, so for Pride, for Pride Month, they would put the flag up, you know, for a week in June, or whatever it ended up being, so that sort of, we, we basically get the orders from the council, in a, in a email or a hard copy letter from Eileen, and then Kim and I usually talk if it's his, if it's mine, if it's both, for the behind-the-scenes stuff to get done.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I think ultimately, like, anything that was, that would go up on, say, the Common or at the Willows or wherever, it would be by order of the mayor, or wherever that would come from, but just giving people a, a way to understand how that should, should happen. Thank you. Other questions or comments? And more motions? Counsel McClain?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some comments, and I can make some motions. How about that? I, I tend to agree with the council president that this doesn't seem totally in our purview, but happy to make recommendations as to what we think should happen, but to me, this seems like a pretty administrative question. There's nothing here we kind of need to do by force of ordinance, so, just putting that out there. Looking at the list of repeating events, just my own opinion, I tend to think that we should only be sort of automatically repeating events that have some sort of governmental association, right? Something that we know is kind of going to be vulnerable in going forward. Some of the stuff on the list is cultural. Many of the people who will come and apply each year and apply over and over will also be cultural. I don't see any particular reason to prize one culture over the other and say, you're on the annual list and you get to come and see us every year. I'm still not quite clear how somebody rises up that list and becomes one of the repeat elite and who gets to like submit the application, so my attitude would be, you know, limited to the Army Birthday and, and all the other things. Those are clear government-associated entities, we're a municipality, and then let everybody else sort of go through their process with everybody else. Those are just my opinions, and I can make motions unless anybody has thoughts they want to add to those thoughts.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
I actually have one more question. Kim, how does it get determined whether it's Riley Plaza or City Hall? So like, the Juneteenth flag, for example, was done here at City Hall, right? There wasn't one at Riley Plaza in that instance. And this, I'm honest to God, just curious, I don't have an opinion in either one.
Well, to be quite honest, yeah, I'm not really sure, but if it's a, a single flag and it's not going to be a big event about it, I mean, we're not going to build something down in Riley Plaza and then not have anybody come. So I, I'm not really sure, and again, I think it comes down, the tighter this sort of process is, the less communication failures we're going to have choosing on the day before an event which flagpole it's going to go up on, you know, and so, the, so the more structured, the better it is. And, and it's not really maybe the purview of the council, but I think it's important that you are, it is, I mean, it kind of is your purview, and the mayor would be, by exception, more so. That way, it's already embedded, and like you said, people know about it, it's listed, so when you're driving by Riley Plaza and there's all new flags out there, you don't get 13 phone calls to your house going, what's going on down there?
Yeah. As a follow-up comment, I just want to say, I think-
Maybe it'll work, I don't know.
I do think that there were, like, many, many people at a large event for the Juneteenth flag raising at City Hall, and I think in that instance, it's just a common and observation is that it's a clear, it's a clear message. But again, that decision, like, how and by whom is, I'm assuming is, is the mayoral decision, which is fine, I just, again, it goes back to that question about transparency, right? Just like, how do I know? Who do I ask? How can I be a part of this?
I think, as I reflect on this, I think it became, there was only one flag, first of all.
Yep.
And to, to mark the occasion, it's actually going to get more visibility out here this, this year, as the first year, so if we're going to, if we're going to, it's on the schedule now, I think it is, right? Or it should be, on the permanent schedule, so.
It is, yeah.
I mean, if we get more flags, and, and we can put all 13 and 12 up down in Riley Plaza next year, it'll be a lot more visible, so.
And then in Dean, Independence Day was a single flag, and a small event, although a lot of singing.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about that until I drove by Riley Plaza and saw it.
Right. So, so I guess it's, I, that's my only question. It sounds like there's a, a good recommendation back to administration, perhaps from the council, that just says, you know, we agree there should be transparent process for requesting flag raising, as well as a clearly communicated calendar of flag raisings, and that we request to receive whatever the permanent annual calendar is at the start of the new year for our, to receive and file. That's a motion.
I guess I'll ask the council president, is it, are we making a recommendation out of committee? Is that, I'm trying to think of what would be appropriate to come out of committee, other than discharging this. Are we making a recommendation to the mayor's office? I'm just curious how that procedurally, I can't figure out how that would-
Can I comment? I would imagine it would be a recommendation back to council that a recommendation be made to the mayor's office, and can be sent to the mayor's office.
Right. Okay.
Did you have your hand raised?
Okay. Let's make some motions. Oh, that's right, you did, just, what was your motion? Okay, so let's go through that motion again.
I move that-
I'm sorry. Julio, Julio did have his hand up, I just wanted to give him an opportunity before we make that motion. Apologies.
Oh, no, please go ahead, I was just going to add on to what Kim said and answer Watsonfeld's question about how he, you know, is it Riley? Is it City Hall? It just depends on what the organization wants and how many flags they have. The Salem United had many flags, so they could do it at Riley, Juneteenth, just had one, depends on the size of the flags, it's not bigger than the American, and, yeah, history, the Juneteenth one was at City Hall before, so it was at City Hall again. That was it. Please, continue.
Counsel Watsonfeld? For yours.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I move that the Subcommittee on Government Services recommend to the council that we recommend to the mayor that a transparent, accessible, online form be made accessible to the City of Salem residents on Salem.com, that makes requesting a flag raising simple and outlines their needs for any programmatic requirements. And-
Hang on one second, sorry. It's going to be jumble. Accessible online form to be accessible.
Include, what did I say? Including necessary, you know, the, any, what necessary requests for, for a speaking Do they need a podium, that kind of thing? We can refine the language. Friendly amendments are helpful.
It's a transparent, accessible-
Online form to request a flag raising.
Flag raising form.
Yeah. Yeah. And that the request form includes any specifications around programmatic requirements. And that we recommend flag raising events be added to the calendar, to the Salem.com calendar, Salem.gov, I should say now, calendar. that the policy be easily accessible online as a part of that application process. And that the City Council be presented with an annual calendar, the first City Council meeting of the new year, to receive and file. With a footnote reminding everybody they can apply all year round. Is that everything? Jeff has a friendly amendment.
One second.
I did my best.
I, I, thank you. I would just like to say to include the reason for the flag raising, who is the, you know, contact person, who will be speaking, how many people approximately will be there, who, who is financing the flags themselves?
Would that be programmatic requirements, or do you want to get into that?
I would consider that programmatic requirements. Contact information is generally a part of online form col, data collection, but I, I see your point.
Can I, can I just say something? So, excuse me, about, so in line with that is, US flag's not a problem, but Juneteenth flag's probably not a problem, but all these other cultural ones, and if they're, they're community-related, then, then they should be purchased, it seems to me, through the community office. You know, because if we're going to say we're going to have a, what was it? Oh, I'm sorry, Irish, right, the Irish flag up there for a certain amount of time, or the Polish constitution flag, I mean, every year it's a, it's, who's got the flag? Everyone's pointing fingers and somebody comes up with one, so, really, if we're going to do it, we should probably specify who's-
If it's not, I would consider that a, a bullet point in the policy. So I think Counsel Cohen's amendment makes a lot of sense. We can recommend it's added to the, to the contact form, the request form, but I would imagine we'd also want to make a recommendation to, to Mr. Emmeling's point, that, that flags should be purchased by- that, that flags should be purchased by the requesting organization or that they are at least responsible for obtaining and providing them. They can get them underwritten or funded by donation or whatever they want.
No, no, I understand that completely, but I'm talking about the Polish flag and the Irish-American flag, those are going up automatically. It's not like we have corned beef and cabbage down on Riley Plaza. No one shows. We just have to have a flag and put it up. So who's going to, who's every year going to get a new flag or every couple of years? That's the permanent ones is what I'm referring to, so.
So Counsel Cohen, for clarification on your friendly amendment, we're recommending that the contact with the application, the flag raising request form include specific information around who will, that the organization will provide the flags. And we can make an asterisk that says, with the exception of flags that are a part of the permanent schedule, I guess. This feels like a level of administration. I'm not sure we need to-
It's a minor detail. You're right. I'm just saying, somebody's got to purchase that US, those other flags. That's all I'm saying.
And I would, maybe there's a fifth bullet on my recommendation motion that says, we recommend that the policy be amended to include language requiring that the requesting organization provide the flags being requested to be raised. Does that capture it, Counselor Cohen, if I state it that way? I got a nod.
Recommend the requesting, we recommend the requesting organization include the source of the flag, the, just provide the flag.
I only say provide because some organizations will seek sponsors for obtaining, you know, for the fundraising portions. We just need them to provide the flag.
So here's what I have so far. Is there more? We can continue, okay. Well, let me just give you what I have so far. Recommend to mayor that a transparent online form be added to Salem.com for the purpose of requesting a flag raising. The request form is to include any specifications around programmatic requirements. We further recommend that flag raising events be added to the Salem City Calendar and the policy be accessible online. We further recommend, I got to change that somehow, but we further recommend that a flag raising calendar be submitted to the city council to be received and filed. We recommend that requesting organization provide the flags.
One amendment, Counselor, that the calendar be provided to the city council at the first council meeting of the new year. And then obviously, those bullets should be organized where they make logical sense.
First regular council meeting.
Yeah.
Was there more? Counsel Marcella.
Can we add that there is a list of, a constantly updated list of the flags for the year? So as, as flag raisings are added, add them to the list. So not only are they going to be on the calendar if there's an event for the flag raising, but they're also on this flag list, on a flag page, on the website, with all of this great information.
So we would just say that the flag raising events be added to Salem City Calendar and the policy be, okay, hang on. Accessible and updated throughout the year?
I think, Counselor, so since she's not a member of the committee, I think I have to formally add this. So let me take it and say that a regularly updated list of flag raisings be visible online as a list, separate from the calendar, near to the source of the request form, so people can reference it before requesting flag raisings. So let's rewrite that.
You want to specify the location on the website?
I think we should say, no, I don't care honestly where it lives, just as long as people can find it. But I think what Counsel Marcella was requesting is that the, that the running list of regularly updated flag raisings appear as a list.
Not as part of a policy.
Right. Separate from the policy PDF online and visible for inquiring flag raisers, so that we don't get multiple requests for permanent-
If I could, just add one thing. I think just to define that a little bit would be to say that the, the flag list will be updated when a form or application is approved. So that way, it's done on a regular basis.
So what I have is, we further recommend that a regularly updated list of flag raising events be added to the Salem City Calendar and the policy be separate and accessible.
So you had it all except-
How specific?
No, you had it all, you had it all except for Counsel Cohen's requested amendment and that I am saying it does not belong on the city council calendar.
Separate and accessible.
From, separate from the calendar.
The policy be separate and accessible. Regularly updated to me means regularly updated. I don't know that-
Yeah, I don't think we need to further define that to Counselor Cohen's point, but I think the point is that the events appear on the calendar, but the list appears elsewhere. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Counsel Cohen.
Yeah, I just spoke to Kim and really need to clarify something that both Kim and Counsel McLean said about what should be on the official calendar. Because I think that there's a view that the, you know, the government, military, flag raising should be on the calendar, everything else should be through the application process.
I would support that, so-
And that's what'll generate the list.
Bullet number six. We further recommend that the annual list of flag raisings be limited to, would you call them standard military observation? Or how would you define the military observation, or just military observation days or-
Generally, it's the birthday of whichever service we're talking about, so. So I'll take a look at that list and just make sure it's official one. So does it have all the five services? Six services on there?
One, two.
Yep, I think they're all on there.
Three.
Good thing it has the Army.
You could say something like established military commemorations.
Established military commemorations, yeah.
Yeah, we'll add that.
Established military-
I'll send a couple more, because there's some.
Would you call them military-
He called them commemorations. I called them observation days, but we'll do whatever resonates with the group.
So just to be clear, this is not, this annual list will not include the pride flag raising?
Irish-American Heritage, overdose awareness day, sorry, Irish-American Heritage, pride, Juneteenth, overdose awareness day, Navy Day, sorry, and Italian-American Heritage Day, which can be applied for on an annual basis, obviously.
Counsel Marcella.
And also, if the mayor wants to add a flag raising, she can add a flag raising. Let's not, let's not discount, that's all, we're not taking away that either.
Right.
Right. So she can just put in, you know, the pride flag.
You can't take that away.
Yeah. No, we can't. I just want to make that clear.
That's why it's like the annual calendar gets submitted to us and the calendar is at the mayor's discretion, like that really, you know.
Of course. She knows, yes.
Just playing devil's advocate, are we just asking the mayor to submit a list of the military birthdays every year?
We're asking the mayor to submit a list of flag raisings that she plans on seeing done in a calendar year. So I don't think we, I don't personally feel we have to limit it, because to Counselor Marcella's point, legally, she can submit to us whatever list she wants. So we can recommend that the calendar be limited, but-
So I think, if I can make a, I guess, a friendly amendment, I think the recommendation is that the policy be updated such that only the military commemorations are what is reflected in the policy, is the recurring calendar item, so that it doesn't appear the city is sponsoring certain cultural initiatives over others.
That is very helpful.
I second that.
What if, just looking, thinking about that, is it, if we're separating the policy from the calendar anyway, would it make sense for the mayor to keep her policy, keep the policy updated and then to submit the calendar separately, so that way we're not, I just, to me, just submitting a list of military commemoration days doesn't seem useful. Adding the military commemoration days into the policy also doesn't seem like something we necessarily need to do, but that's just-
I think, I think, let me clarify this. What we're saying is, those military days are always going to be on it every year. They're the ones that roll over every year. Whoever the mayor is can start the year by saying, I want this flag raised at this time. This is my list, I'm going to send it to the council. If you guys, you know, we don't even need to approve it because it's the mayor's list and she has the authority to approve it. So, but, but the rollover ones are the military ones that we talked about. I think that's what the recommendation is. Now, they could change, they could change that, they could not accept that, but-
Right.
That's what our recommendation is. And then each year, the mayor can decide what flags are raised besides those. And then we take care of any that come in during the year.
Right.
That are outside of that list.
So would we say, we recommend that the annual list of flag raisings be military commemoration days and any days the mayor, and any additional-
Like I said, I don't think we need to approve, I don't, these don't need to be approved, right?
That, and so what I'm-
It's just a receive and file. I think that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying, but what I thought I heard is that that list be amended to remove, so again, the policy being separate from the list.
Exactly.
Right? The policy reflecting the military standard annual observant days.
Yes.
Observation days.
Yes.
The list we get that we're recommending request for, for the first meeting in January is the list that she intend, is her calendar for the year, pending any additional requests that come in, right? Like notwithstanding what may come down the line. And that list, that list she provides us, that calendar she provides us can have 365 different flag raisings on it, right? Because that's well within her purview. We're not trying to control that. So if we treat the policy and the list slash calendar as different things, right, because the calendar's a third thing, the policy should include a list of military observation days that are done on an annual basis, period, that roll over no matter who's in office. And then the request for the list in January should be all-inclusive to the best of her ability as of that date.
Okay. So would I, so could we include that under the Salem City Calendar and the policy, including established military commemoration days be separate and accessible? Would that make sense? Does that need to be a separate bullet point?
I think the way that Lev phrased it should be in the, this is just the recommendation. I think the way that, I'm sorry, Counsel McLean phrased it is what we should have, because we're not dictating anything, we're just asking for this, because like the Indian flag raising just came up through the mayor's office. We didn't vote for that. And whoever the mayor is, is going to dictate the flag raisings. We're just trying to create some kind of structure so that we know the parameters of what people want to do when they are requesting a flag raising and what they, and what's expected of them.
My concern is if we say that the annual policy be limited, the annual list be limited to established military commemoration days, that we're confusing the annual list that the mayor's submitting with the policy. I just, I don't know why-
So what I'm saying is, is we're making, we're making a recommendation to the mayor to have a more defined policy and an application, okay? And then it's up to the mayor to phrase it in a way that would be appropriate for, we're not reviewing this and approving it to the mayor.
My question is, why do we need a separate bullet point to state that military observation days be separate? If she's already submitting a calendar, we can leave that to her to create her policy and submit her policy. I just think we're confusing the language here by saying annual lists can only be military holidays, but also-
Hold on, please. I think we're talking about two separate items. I think you're conflating two items, I'm sorry. The existing policy already includes a list of recurring annual items. My amendment is simply that the existing list in that amendment, excuse me, my amendment is that the existing list within the policy be amended to only include military observation days. And the utility of that, to speak to that question, is, number one, it avoids the appearance of the city sort of enshrining certain cultural organizations or institutions over the others, but it also allows us to communicate outward to potential applicants, these are days which the municipality will always reserve because they are governmental commemoration days. So our policy will always say, these days are reserved in advance before any other list gets submitted. That is just the policy.
Right.
Then we have the separate action, which is at the first meeting of the year, we request that the mayor submit any, any flag raising days which they would like to put on the calendar for the year, which can include the military observation days as well as any further days that the mayor deems fit and can submit them all and we can receive it and file it and that will establish it outright. And then further organizations can come forward throughout the year and go through the regular application, which we're going to establish in order to get their flag raisings also added to the calendar.
Counselor, if I may-
And just as a point of order, just to ensure we're, the chair is recognizing as we're having this conversation that we're not just jumping in. Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you. I know we're bang out of order tonight and I appreciate your patience, Chair. To Counsel McLean's point, in your notes to write the recommendation back again, instead of, because I know there's a lot of confusion around the use of the words calendar and the use of the words list. So I think that directly referencing item six in the current flag policy as it exists. So item six, the recommendation is, item six in the flag policy be amended to list only the annually observed military observation days and that all cultural flag raising requested-
Hang on, one second.
Come through the request process. Right, yeah, exactly, sorry, thank you.
So we further recommend that item six in the flag policy be further amended to list only established military commemoration days. And continue.
And that, I'm going to say cultural, if someone has a comment, please. And that all requests for cultural flag raisings come through the request form online or by order of the mayor. Or the council. And actually, instead of saying or by order of the mayor, it should say and/or, because that the request still has to be approved. Now I'm getting into the logistics, but is that clear, does that help clarify?
We further recommend that item six in the flag policy be further amended to list only established military commemoration days and the requests for cultural flag raisings come through the request form online or by order of the mayor and/or council.
That's correct.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. Just a friendly amendment that Mr. Emmeling provided to me. So the commemorative days and federally recognized holidays. Second?
Can I ask for clarification on that? Because federally recognized holidays don't appear on this permanent list.
Yeah, Juneteenth is on there, right?
Yeah, but July 4th isn't.
Well, I'm just saying, are federally recognized holidays, so you don't even have to list them so much, but.
Okay, yeah.
So, what's the, so, military commemoration days.
Or federally recognized holidays. And then, we got to add, I guess.
I sure hope the mayor listens to these recommendations.
She's going to laugh.
Okay.
Do you want to read them back?
Absolutely. We further recommend that item six in the flag policy be further amended to list out only established military commemoration days or federally recognized holidays and that requests for cultural flag raisings come through the request form online or by order of mayor, the mayor and/or city council.
I guess, now, sorry, y'all. Now that I'm thinking about it, I think we, if we're going to recommend the request form, we should probably recommend to amend the policy to include a review of the request form and that a request form does not indicate a flag raising, right? That there is still some review. Do we need to put that in there?
We're not writing the policy.
Jesus.
Julio and the mayor can write the policy.
Yeah, okay, fine. Then they're going to amend the policy. Julio, please amend the policy as needed. Thank you.
Julio's even still here, I know. Okay, so are we ready to read it all back or is there more? Good. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your patience. The only additional amendment I would add is that the extant landing page, wherever it arrives on the website, also include information for potential applicants about the minimum lead time required to submit an application for successful approval and that it establish a maximum amount of time or other threshold for how long flags will be flown, whether that's a week or whether it's you can have until the next person requests or what have you. But it would be good for, it would be good to establish guidelines for people that will make it clear when folks need to apply prior to a flag-raising event and how long the flag can be flown for.
So, I would write the bullet thus. Accepting your friendly amendment, I would write the bullet point that, well, the recommendation is actually that a standardized duration of time for a flag being raised be determined and communicated. And that on the application, there is a minimum required number of days to receive the application prior to it being able to be reviewed and approved, that timeline being determined by the mayor's office.
And then, a minimum required.
Minimum number of lead time, minimum number of days before an event, that number of days to be determined by the mayor's office.
Should we say something to the effect of, we recommend standards for application be communicated, including, but not limited to, time a flag is to be raised and timelines for submission? Or do we want to just, so what I have here right now, just to make sure it's not confusing, we recommend a standardized time for flags being lowered and raised to be determined and communicated and the city provide a limited number of days before an event.
Minimum number of days before an event.
Minimum.
And I think, will you read the first one again? Because I think I said duration.
We recommend a standardized time for flags being lowered and raised and be determined and communicated.
So, I would imagine interpreting the word time as to be time of day, I would use the word duration.
We recommend a standardized duration for flags being lowered and raised be determined and communicated and the city provide a minimum number of days before an event that a flag is to be raised. Good?
Second. Going nuts here. I think, this is a recommendation, so I think we got it.
Do you want to read the whole thing back?
Yeah, before you second.
Before you second.
Let him have it, let him read it. And then, by God, second it.
Counselor Watsonfeld says, recommends, recommend to mayor that a transparent, accessible online form be added to Salem.com for the purpose of requesting a flag raising. The request form is to include any specifications around programmatic requirements. We further recommend that a regularly updated list of flag-raising events be added to the Salem City calendar, the policy be separate and accessible. We further recommend the flag-raising calendar be submitted to the city council on the first regular council meeting of the new year to be received and filed. Recommend that requesting organizations provide the flags. We further recommend that item six in the flag policy be further amended to list only established military commemoration days or federally recognized holidays and that requests for cultural flag raisings come through the request form online or by order of the mayor and/or council. We recommend a standardized duration for flags being lowered and raised be determined and communicated and the city provide a minimum number of days before an event that a flag is to be raised.
Apologies, there is one to add it to the last. It's a minimum number of days, wait, could you repeat that last, actually?
A minimum number of days before an event that a flag is to be raised.
Read that whole, that whole section.
And that the city provide a minimum number of days before an event that a flag is to be raised.
So, the city establish a minimum number of days to receive the application prior to a flag being raised? I should have been a lawyer.
Establish a minimum number of days. Establish a minimum number of days.
To apply or to receive the application prior to a flag being raised.
We recommend a standardized duration for flags being lowered and raised be determined and communicated and that the city establish a minimum number of days to receive the application prior to a flag being raised.
Second, I hope she reads it, or whoever the mayor is.
Seconded by Counselor Varela. All in favor? All opposed? I see five, five counselors voting, five in the affirmative, none opposed. The matter carries. Further motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Watsonfeld, motion to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed, five in favor, none opposed. Thank you all. Thank you for humoring this entire conversation.